Alive.
Public. Policy practice. Thousand programs. I got the. The thousand. Government plan. Thousand policy practice. Where's displacement and relocation? So. Children, anybody? Hearing. Public comment on. There's a post grant application. But it wishes to address the commission that is closed. Not hearing any children. Who's that? She's here. Children ask for coming back in housing and community building. She's going to come to that. How much of that?
Yes, we're going to be. The funds, the 25,000 will be essentially split between the college and the planning commission. For implementing the work plan and we're also talking to some other funders as well that would that supplement.
That's what's going to be happening.
Essentially. Well.
Are the questions that are in the housing.
Um, correct. The residential anti-displacement, residential anti-displacement plan is a templated document. And just a quick note, I really. This is a planning grant as opposed to a public facilities grant. So there is no construction, therefore no potential for displacement.
Yep.
And Ray. And John, would I can do a, um, do you name some people? Sounds wonderful. Okay. Okay. The fat, right? Yep, yeah, these came from China. I'm going to need a copy. Thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Forward to reading the plan.
Alright. Certainly.
You guys are holding public hearings up on that itself.
Yeah, so we will have public hearings when we get to the end of the planning process. So we're going to be adopting in three parts. We'll have the economic development component. We'll have a hearing in June of 26. Transportation component, September of 26, and the ambient environment in December of 26. So and the drafts will be available unblocked before that. Before each of the hearings and adoptions. We'll make sure to include you.
Yeah.
Let you do it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, Roger. One hundred and fifty grand, a thousand dollars. So. Sure, put a ten into the.
This grant, it's the granite.
It's all through the.
Yeah, so same one we've we've done. This time we're just doing it with Dover and Summers.
They never participate because they don't have the staff. And all the other smaller towns, we used to side MOUs, but all agencies, no one ever participates in it. So it's still.
And.
Summers, excuse me, my apologies.
They tried to get them to manage it, but. They really appreciated having us. It's a little bit more money than we.
Yeah, it's a two-year grant cycle. They've been doing one-year cycles since its inception. So you work with, like, State Police?
I'm not with State Police. So this is for reimbursement for overtime, just for our deputies, Dover and Summers.
What is your function? You know, do you do, we have a need system. Of course, you're the highest. State. And that. That process. You usually don't involve these other things. How does that?
So actually, so this is all going, this money is for drug investigation enforcement.
Oh, so you do that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's another function then. Normally, do I?
And. And the governor actually disbanded the the drug task force that had been in existence for many years. So in the last budget, they actually put more money into this type of funding so that the counties and the cities and towns can pick up some of the slack. Hopefully, the drug task force. So.
This is the only one.
Um, this is, this is similar to what's been done in the past.
They have done these tasks easily. There's this transportation survey. Once.
Uh, yes, except there's there, we do have a quite robust investigative unit as well. Uh, so in that and working with the other towns and cities and also our federal partners to do do drug work. So I think even just in the last six months, we've done a decent amount, but over the past few years, there's been a lot. Uh, we've got some numbers about the drug, the drug seizures that have come from from this office. So it, we have been pretty active in that.
Wow, good. And all of those, what you're doing.
Yes.
Because they, you know, I mean, we can cooperate.
And and even the involvement that we have with with the jail and the transports, I mean, we're seeing the drug, the bigger drug pens and getting to know them. And so we have a unique vantage point from you. And also to your point that we definitely are cooperative with with State Police, share information and and all of and all of that worked very well. So. It takes, takes a lot of cooperation to. If these drugs. Definitely.
Thank you. Okay, we'll do about, I don't know, seven purchases, shares on. So we had one budget.
So last year we approved, um, a thousand dollars, approved for mortgages. At that time, that was the quote we had. So a bunch of being approved, we went ahead and put in the quote to what we wanted to do originally, and that over doubled. And I came back at over $200,000. So what we decided to do was kind of curtail operations. So we currently run what's called the X26P taser. It's an older model, but it's still, you can still get batteries, you can still get charges. But eventually that's going to be deadlined. Axon has not given a date without a normal raise. So there's been this big push to go to the taser seven. Now the taser 10 is their latest degree. And the pricing they offered was motivating agencies to go and get it cheaper. What we decided to do was we're going to maintain the X26s for the SLR staff and get 10 brand new tasers for our full-time frontline deputies. With that will come free training from Axon to train these guys to be instructors in the taser team. And then with that, we have eleven of. All been in the new taser. So say two or three years down the road, they say, hey, we're done. You can't get any more equipment to support XP26s, X26Ps. We can move into a new one. And the 10 being the latest and greatest, that should be, should have a pretty hard shelf life. And by doing so, the, uh, well, we actually came at half, but a bunch of 400,000, I think it's. Over five years, it's 53,996 dollars. So is that going to be paid over five years? Over five years. Over five years. So 12 the first, 12 the first year, then 10 the subsequent. That gets us the new technology. Still have, you know, our per diem deputies, our court security staff can still have the old tasers, which are perfectly fine. They're still operational, but you know, it's such a. Plain dogs lesson with these companies, they want to keep pushing their new stuff. So that kind of gets our foot. In the event that they say, hey, guess what? You can't get batteries. Supply charges. It does not. I always assume. Appreciate the effort, Sheriff's Department, trying to cross that. Be fair, initially, I always hear about tasers. Right. I'll, I'll be happy. We, we were deployed body cams.
One other kind of savings, big time saving, is that original quote was looking to replace every single taser, which was including all of the tasers that the CSOs carry. So the value here is that we don't, we won't be in for a few more years, we won't be training the CSOs on the new system. We'll keep up this older system, which gets, uh, these 10 R deputies will have a very good confident understanding of this very progressive technology. And then we could ease into the rest of those replacement when necessary. So that was going to be quite a labor-intensive and classroom time to get each of those, um, people trained. So. Uh, so two requests, so the bid waiver, just this is the, the only kind, it's a sole source situation. This is a technology that Axon is the only, this is the one. Um, and then the approval for that first year payment of 12,399 and into the contract process that that lasts. Give something after.
Talk about the copy contracts.
Alright. Okay, so while you may or may not know, copiers were actually due to go out for bids at fall. Um, with the tariff situation that kind of worried me a little bit, so I reached out to Keysera to see what it would cost for us to extend out for three years. If you remember, our first contract with Keysera included a buyout from Canon. So we ended up having a 63-month contract. So making this a six-year contract was not huge. Uh, it actually saved us money. Um, the cost actually goes down. They're going to replace five or six of the high-volume machines that we have. Um, and the current cost per month, per month is, uh, 3,100 and change. The new cost is going to be 26 and change. Uh, because we're using old machines, except for the ones that are high-volume machines that need to be replaced. Um, so the, the service contract, which is the most important part, frankly, uh, what we pay for copy is going to stay the same for the first year. It's going to go up 5% the next year. Um, and then it'll stay at about 5%. Um, so really not a significant change. In fact, what I did was I put a cost per thousand copies on the bottom here because the numbers are so small and you go for individual copies. Sorry for me to wrap my head around. So if I do it per thousand, it makes it a little bit more, um, understandable. Uh, like I said, I'm worried if we go off the grid, that we could tariff and everything else, volatility. In fact, most of the copy returns will proceed that we're going to get. So yeah, so so the current is least but cost for each copy. And the cost per copy includes all the service and the tumor and all that stuff. Everything but the paper.
Sure, sure.
Copy? It's right, yeah, it's right here. It's like a 10th percent. Or not, yeah, 100th percent.
Whoa.
So that's why I put the cost per thousand down below of what we're currently paying. So $9 or 384,000 for the big machines because they're a little more economical. So the cost per copy is really where I found when everyone go out for bid on the copiers, that's where the cost factor comes in and that's where people make a break in on the contract. Um, so they're keeping it the same. Right, essentially, except that five is staying. It's, it's, and they honestly, Diana, I think can speak to, their billing's been really good, their service, they're on top. Agent Janet, you haven't had any problems with getting a lot of service, have you? Yeah, they're usually right, they're usually right here. Um, they've been pre-done with. When you consider where we used to be. Exactly. Yeah, I think we have to do an 80,000 dollar buyout of those contracts because the service and everything else is so wrong. I'm literally stating it's over the three years, 18,000 dollars. Thank you very much. Bye, Tom. Thank you.
Okay, we've got some upcoming meetings and stuff. Remember. So we have three. They think deep themselves and now. Think what happened. You, you might not, you might not think it's. It's, it's huge. Well. I asked them about that and I think they're all afraid and terrified. What do you have? What's that? Aging them, aging them. It's a massive, it's under, it's a huge amount of training to get staff. It means nothing today and I'm sure it won't be anything to you. I'll be signing those documents regarding the city manager. I, I haven't seen it since. That part of the partnership. And honestly speaking, it's been a whole few years since I created, saying things. But I just wanted to load it. I just wanted to put it in the mix that I am. Although I have no contact. I just thought I. Yeah. I don't, you never know nowadays, but I'd rather just declare it a punt. Someone's a tiger, always a tiger. Whatever, whatever you're, I don't even know what it is. I tell you, dude, it's been so long I can't even remember what the mask got in. And at the time I went, they really didn't participate much at school, but now they do. The butt stain. Here yesterday was, uh, 25th in July day. So every, every entity on the administrative floor, Patrick Reed, their own. Uh, people for the residents. So I just wanted to tell you it was a smashing success. We have, uh. Myself, Sandy, Jamie. Uh, Jody and Dee all did. We bought props and took the residents' pictures in, in various props. So we took over 100 pictures so that those would be available to the residents, uh, as well as on a camera at the front of the side and a TV stream. And. Everybody had to, I challenged everybody on A4 to. Well, I'll tell you, it's been 118. My wife found these, because everybody had to produce nine alcohol drinks. So. My wife found these drinksters. Really? So they put one of the drinksters, which is, you know, standard size and with my picture on it, it made into a thermometer. I wrecked the thermometer. They got, they got a good charge. Me and the father, it was just a product. Yeah, I've got a good charge. It worked super well. We, we still have our outside technique. I am Ted suggesting that it be in September. Imagine it being on a day like the afternoon. It's going to be in September. It was actually, it was a lot of fun and we got a lot of participation from the jail. The res, the residents just loved it. And a lot of families came. A lot of people stayed. A lot of people stayed. Yeah, I'm sorry. But undertaking, and it's great to see, great work. What you've done. It's, it's, it's a big regret, and I, you know, I'm, one of the things, I'm, I have an aversion to smoke. And, so, so they got five inches more going, so last summer, last winter, so. And when they have an inch of smoke, they panic, so, which I love, because nobody else feels it. So, and that's the seventh of August, and, you know, I appreciate everyone, what everybody's on. Wish the best to Joe Young, folks. Continue, gentlemen. Reveal Tennessee. Tennessee, about to Tennessee. No, no, that's not. Oh, by, by, between ways, so. Matter of fact, my, my address is seven oh five Sulphur Wells Academy Road. And I, I, I drank right now for the rest of my days. Yeah, but get those stipends. One of the things is ten acres, it's got a, it's ironic, it's a peach tree, which when I was a kid, it used to be, it used to be, you know, a pear tree. So, matter of fact, one of my friends has just died, and he always called me Peachtree. I used to work with him. Became great friends. You know, and that, it's funny that there's one beach at the property, it's ten acres. It's very, and it's got outbuildings, you can put all my junk, I didn't get it, you know. It's, it's a dream come true, but then again, you know, you, you know, I've been a member of, uh, my home record has been where I live right now, my entire life. You know, I was in the service, that was my home record. It's, you know, that, it's great, it's great, it's great to move. I've done it before, with some, no, I didn't do it in a day, I'm at now. You got a, like, uh, the move. Got a twenty-six footer and a twenty footer, and it may not be. But I got, I got, I got some youngish. That couple's going to drive, flying back from Tennessee, that's where he lives, so. He's, uh, driving a big truck, I'm in a trailer, a twenty-foot trailer. We'll, we'll say this, it should be, it should be interesting. What's that, wore out, my wife, well, she's had a heart operation, so. You know, she's broken a lot off. Do you have family near us? Yeah, my, my son, he, he lives right near me, uh, near me, in, which is about hour and a half northwest of Nashville. So Nashville, I mean, and that's what's nice, is this is, you know, it comes rules there. I mean, and you don't have a lot of, it's, it's early, which, which I get kind of sick of. Matter of fact, my last, my last night, I was at, because somebody had a conference, I'm on that zoning department. They, they said, hey, I'd like to chair that meeting, you know, everybody else. I'd like to, last official, I come. Yeah, they're giving, you have too many. Well, it's, while you see the legislature's trying to curb that, trying to, which were dealing, dealing states, you know, you know, in all states.
Yeah, I've been, I've been up to the, um, the biggest, the guy living. And thank you for all of your work, and we're going to miss you. Appreciate it.